The Planning Commission, Tuesday, June 7th, for tonight's meeting. First item to do is we'll call this meeting to order. Again, Tuesday, June 7th, 2016, meeting of the City of North Miami Planning Commission. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, may we have the roll call, please?
Chair Kevin Seifried.
Excuse absence.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each. Commissioner Jason James. Commissioner Emmanuel Gentey.
Here.
Commissioner Peggy Bule, she'll be late.
Yes.
Commissioner Bob Pichon.
Here.
Okay, we have quorum.
Thank you very much. To staff, is there any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir, there's no agenda.
All right, thank you.
The only comment that I'd like to make, Mr. Chair, if I may briefly, is just to recognize the fact that Commissioner McDermott, although he was, he's an alternate, was present at the last meeting. So I just want to, you know, put that on the record, that he was present as he is today. Thank you, sir.
And that was not reflected in the minutes, so.
Right, so I just.
With the approval of the minutes, we can make note of that.
Recognize, exactly, yes, sir.
That will, I will ask for motion to approve of the minutes with the amended, that Mr. McDermott was present at the last meeting.
As he is today, thank you, sir.
All right, very good. So at this time, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
Still moved.
Mr. Pichon moves for approval.
I'll second.
Mr. James, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Staff, is there any communications for us this evening?
There's really no communication. We just had, you know, a boat and ducks, you know, a community meeting, which the Planning Commission, Mr. Pichon just attended, so there's no other communication.
All right. Okay, very good. I would hope in the future that city, both departments, I believe, the city manager's office called that meeting today, and then the Planning Commission meeting was scheduled by staff for this night, so we would have liked to have been a part. I think a lot of us on that, on this panel, would have liked to have been a part of that. So it's unfortunate that there was some mix-up there. So I hope in the future, if we can kind of not plan two important meetings on the same night, that would, that this panel would need to be in attendance for.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Any continued public hearings?
None.
Very good.
It's a point of order, Mr. Chair, if I may. Any communications between the board members and any of the parties present here before you? No communications between any commissioner and the parties before you?
No.
Thank you, thank you, you may proceed.
Thank you. Is that correct, or is anyone? No one, no one on the panel has had communications with anyone making their presentations tonight?
No. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to the public hearings. First item tonight will be PC 08-16, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2016-2017 action plan under the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Grant programs, providing for an effective date and for all of the purposes. May we have staff report, please?
Again, Nixon Legrand, in the city planner of the city of North Miami. This item is for the approval of the fiscal year 2016-2017 action plan under the CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Programs. Every year, you know, as an entitlement community, and the city is required by HUD to have an action plan which outlines the needs and priority for the funding year. So we've done this last year at the same time, and then this year again, we have to do it as a requirement of HUD, and then we have, you know, our housing manager, one, Ms. Marie Jean Ferance, who's gonna step up to the mic and go even further into the recommendation of the action plans.
Good evening. Go ahead and introduce yourself once again. Switch.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Marie Ferance Jean Ference, City of North Miami Housing Manager. Has the planner, Nixon, just presented to you, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission receive the public input, which will subsequently take place after the city council approves, to reach a recommendation of the approval and supporting resolution prior to the submission to the mayor council to approve the action plan. Has, he said earlier, each year, we're supposed to adopt an action plan outlining exactly what we're gonna be doing with the CDBG and the home funds. As such, in the back, you're gonna see, that action plan's supposed to be submitted by August 15th, so we subsequently will have a June 28th for the council approval and a 30-day commenting period by the public. As you can see here, the way it was outlined, we have a total amount of $931,410, from that, $722,224 was allocated by HUD toward the CDBG, and $209,186 for the home funds. The way it was broken down, it's $144,444 by law, we can only allocate 20% of the total allocation of that $722, which was $144,444. The housing rehabilitation, which is, which has been identified as one of the highest need within the community, was $364,447. $52,000 was allocated toward economic development, which would be like job creation, any entertainment or any training that we all conduct throughout the year, we'll adopt. $108,333 was allocated toward the CBO funds, in which $20,000 will be going toward YOB. Public facilities, which should capital improvements.
Could you identify YOB for us, please, for the record?
Oh, Youth Opportunity Board.
Thank you.
It's just like those after-school kids. We, every year, for the summer, the city hires them through our different departments, and give them like up to 20 hours a week, just to keep them busy for the summer. The public facilities, which are capital improvement, sometime it can goes toward parks or public works, whichever has, will be identifying in the future. And this, well, that's the second year we have adopted the elderly emergency repairs for $30,000. But we are also receiving state grant, which will be leveraged toward the $30,000 for the elderly, because it is also one of the highest need that we do have. Those 30, that $30,000 usually sometime we will assist the elderly with either an AC that is broken down, an emergency plumbing, or any roof patching that we may seem deemed necessary to be done, or replace their doors. They don't have to go to that loophole, as far as going to the qualification, it would be like up to $6,000 per elderly that we'll be able to address, so we can just put like $5,000, six, we plan to at least assist like six or seven elderly's with that funds. And the home program, which by law, we can only allocate 10% toward administration, it will be $20,919. The Community Housing Development Organization set aside that we must do, as far as partners with any developers that are promoting affordable housing, which is 15%, which will be $31,378. We have the Home Single Family Rehabilitation Program, $135,389. We have allocated $20,000 for the first-time home buyer. The reason why it is at a low rate, it's because we have had money sitting in the bank in the past, because we have the money sitting there, but we cannot find qualified buyer to obtain a first mortgage, then get the assistance. So since we know owner-occupied resident do need the assistance, we do allocate the money toward the rehab more than the first-time home buyer, because there is a need, but they cannot qualify to obtain a first mortgage. And the tenant-based rental assistance, this is in the event that you are, let's say, code cited the property owner, and then the property owner doesn't want to fix the property, usually as a retaliation, the property owner will get them out. So we just give them, any tenant that are within the city of North Miami, the ability to be able to move as a first month in security, just to be relocated, to defer the cost to move in, because it was unexpected.
Can I go back to item number nine, the home first-time home buyer program?
Yes.
If those funds aren't used, what, do you roll them into another program, did you say, or does that just sit there?
No, no, we do, we will, we do reprogram them, and then recognize them as single-family rehab. But since it is one of our activities, we must at least put some money aside, if in case, we do have, we don't have to come back to council and say, can you approve that amount of money for us?
Right, I see.
And that could include the presentation how the fund would be allocated for the fiscal year 16-17.
Very good. Are there any quick questions by staff before we open the public hearing? Anyone have any questions of staff?
Just one, on the economic development.
Yes.
How many did we get last year? You had $50,000 set aside. Do you know how many businesses?
Can't hear you.
Were, what kinds of, there we go. On the economic development, where we had the $50,000 set aside, how many businesses did we have last year?
Right now, we have three agreements. What we do, it's, it's a leverage, it's a matching fund. We are doing the green rehab grant, whereas the, the building owner, I mean, the business owner will come and apply, and it is, you have to have an audit by FPL, and then you have to, everything that you're gonna be using, meaning your storefront, your roof, or either your water heater, you just have to match it. Let's say if it's 10, it's up to $10,000, let's say you, you have to show us you have $10,000. Right now, we are in agreement with three business owners.
So this is just a matching grant?
A matching grant.
Okay.
That's the way we are using it.
And this is with Florida Power and Light?
No, no, we, you have to get audited. This is one of the requirement. You have to get an audit from the Florida Power and Light, recommending what you can do to do to turn your business into green.
Lower your energy, and, okay.
Yes, yes.
And how many did you get last year, do you recall?
How many did I what, sorry?
How many businesses did you get?
This is this year, this, this is current year, $50,000. We have, we had agreement with three.
Didn't we have it last year in last year's budget also?
Yes, we did. We did not have anybody yet.
We didn't have anybody.
No, no. Because it was a matching grant, so it's hard for people to come with their cash money and get it done.
You know, it, the reason I'm bringing that up, I'm also on the CRA, and, you know, maybe we could do a joiner there with the CRA. A lot of businesses come for assistance, and you might be able to program that in with the CRA.
Sam Blatt has reached out to the CRA, he has been working closely with the CRA. What we try to implement this year, this is why we don't see a definite definition of the economic development part of it. This year, we are working to see if we can partner with some schools that will prepare for the, like, any, any, any schools, for just to send someone to school, and then as, as, as a result, as a conclusion, you will just allow them to have a job, so we'll just try to do job creation. Meaning, you know, those technical school that we have within the city, that have been partnered with Solemia? So we try to see, this is how we're working on. We did not identify a specific activity, it's because we know the green rehab was not really successful, so we just try to defer into whatever we have right now, to see if we can implement something else.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anyone liking, that would like to speak on this plan? Any comments, please come forward. Name your, give you a name and address, please. Good evening, Mr. Prevettell.
Good evening. William Prevettell, 11950 North Bay Shore Drive. As usual, we always, our city unfortunately does not have the funds we'd like to have for all of these good endeavors, but I was just wondering, when we have a program where private business receives a certain amount of money, and in certain cases, a fairly substantial amount of money, in respect to our overall operations, is that money tied to having local quotas of hiring? It could be, it could be sole proprietors having that business, I realize. Or are those people that are getting these benefits, are they also residents of the area? If you were a sole proprietor, are they residents of North Miami?
Yes.
To minimize abuse and to keep the, these funds serving our community. And lastly, it was that, you know, I've been to so many meetings where we've had community organizations requesting money, and that's always been really such a meager sum, really very meager sum for sometimes large operations that are helping many, many people, and I wish there was a better balance, when we see a fairly, you know, sometimes five times what these organizations are getting to a single business. So just, what are your thoughts?
Meaning, when you say, given it, first, having a tax receipt, a corporation, a legal corporation within the city of North Miami, that person is paying taxes, so therefore it is considered a person who's investing within the city. So if that person, even if they own the building, or if they are, they have a current lease, so therefore, they are tied within the city, so therefore, we cannot just say, because you're not a city resident, we cannot give you that grant. Because if the owner accept for us to do, because the tenant is not benefiting, the property owner is benefiting that program. Because if that owner were to move out, the property owner will benefit at the end. The end result will be with the property owner, whom is also an owner of a building within North Miami. This is how we saw it as.
Okay, that would make sense. And is there any, is there any qualification, is there any requirement for having local hiring also?
Yes, yes.
Local hiring?
Oh, no, we did not, this is why we are deterring between that, because although the people have to leverage their money, this is why we try to implement something else for economic development, to see if we can gather up that money and reappropriate it to the job creation with the local hiring, and then you have to guarantee that person you're gonna do, provide them jobs within the city, and guarantee that they will have a job.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Prevettell. Any other people wishing to speak on the housing plan? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, I entertain any discussion from the commission? Anyone? Mr. Pichon?
Really, my question was, you answered my question already, it had to do with the administrative fees, and those are statutory.
Yes, yes. And in addition, although you just, you see it as, that it looks like it is a lot, general fund has to also leverage with our administrative fee as well, because it's not just administration, it's just delivery cost.
Very good. Okay, if there's no other comment or input, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Mr. Each has moved for approval.
Second.
And Emmanuel, Mr. Gentey has a second motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item we're going to move on to is the CDBG funding, which most of you are here this evening. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, and then after I finish, I'm going to give a couple of points that I want to make before each one of you are allowed to make your presentation. If you allow me, I'll go ahead and read into the record. PC 09-16, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving the award of fiscal year 2016-2017 Community Development Block Grant, better known as CDBG, funds to not-for-profit, community-based organizations that are known as CBOs, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. May we have staff report, please?
Good evening, you know, members of the Planning Commission, and Nixon Legrand, City Planner. And this staff report before you is for the award of the fiscal year 2016-2017, you know, Community Development Block Grant, and funds which are to be distributed to the not-for-profit, you know, community-based organizations. So with that, you know, I would have, you know, our housing manager, Ms. Jean Ferance, you know, to provide further details on this, on the award. Thank you.
Good evening. Marie Ference Jean Ference, Housing Manager, City of North Miami. Again, staff is hereby request that the Planning Commission hear the presentation for the community-based organization that submitted their proposal for the fiscal year 2016-17 under the CDBG grant, and also review staff recommendations, and then subsequently refer it to the city council. As you know, 15% of the CDBG allocation has to go toward public service activity. As such, the CDBG, the city has allocated $108,333 from the CDBG grant, from that $108,333, $80,000 will be allocated toward the CBOs, community-based organization, and the YOB, Youth Employment Summer Program. Twelve of the, of the community organization responded, apply, requesting a total amount of $181,508 for, from the fiscal year 16-17. The, the, the panel was made of, who made the selections for the 12 organizations was made from Parks and Recreation with Andrea Ramos, Mayors and Council, Cassandra Timothy, the Purchasing Department Procurement Pearson Sherwood, and Finance, Yvonne Wright. Attach are the name, I'm pretty sure you have the table, so how they were ranked, and how they were chosen. As a request, I'm pretty sure you, I think you were inquiring about whom from the, from the community base really will be assisting the youth, from what I've identified, eight of them will be assisting the youth, and then some of them will be assisting the elderly, one of them assisting the elderly, and you have financial literacy mixed with immigration services, and also organization that will be assisting the elderly. So we had a mixture of all three. And those services will be principally benefits low and moderate income persons, prevent, eliminate blunt display, and address an urgent need which we do have in the community. The CBOs, I'm pretty sure they're all here, or most of them, they are really present, so they can make, you can ask any, they can make any presentation, or you can ask them any question.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I would like to let you all know that each one of the presenters will get three minutes to make their presentation. We have, I hope all of us had a chance to read over your presentation, and staff did a great job in filling in with the information we needed to know, as far as your financials are concerned, your goals of the organization, and your past work. All of that was noted, and we were able to look over each one of those points as mentioned. What I would like for you to do, however, because a lot of times, after you've finished the presentation, normally, a member of the commission will ask you if this is your first time, and if you have any other funding sources. So when you make your presentation, if you could please make that a part of your presentation to let us know whether or not you have received funding from other agencies, and/or if this is your first time applying through the city of Miami, or North Miami. That way, we won't have to hold up the proceedings and ask you that. We'll make note of it each time that each one of the presenters come up. Everybody clear on that?
Yes.
Okay, great. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and, this will be a part of the public hearing. For the record, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for comments from each one. I'm going to start with the order that staff has given us, so the number one organization up for the presentation will be Russell Life Skills and Reading Foundation. We have a representative from that organization here. Russell Life Skills has requested an amount of $18,000. Staff has recommended $8,750. Good evening, may I have your name and address, please?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Pauline Doyle. I'm Director of Programs at the Russell Life Skills and Reading Foundation, and our address is 5400 South University Drive, Davie, Florida, 33328.
Very good. If I could just hold you one second, if the videographer in the back could go ahead and start the clock for us, please? Oh, you have the timer? Okay, thank you. All right, you may proceed, I apologize.
Okay. My name is Pauline Doyle, Director of Programs at the Russell Life Skills and Reading Foundation, DBA Russell Education Foundation. Since 1998, our mission has been opening books to open doors. As a not-for-profit organization, we offer the after-school Russell Reading Program that includes reading, math, science, the mentoring program, and family assistance. The Russell Life Skills and Reading Foundation has been in North Miami since 2004 at Sunkist Grove Park, helping low-to-moderate income students do better in school. Our primary aim and using certified teachers is to increase reading comprehension skills for participating students, and to help them improve their performance in school and on the Florida State Assessment Test. The driving goal behind the program is to introduce North Miami's youth to the broader world through reading, and to inspire, empower, and encourage their emergence as successful, productive citizens into the community at large. We see and hear stories every day. Kids who could not read have now increased their grade level, reading at or above grade level. Children who were struggling in math are doing much better. A student wrote, "My dream is to become a teacher. I believe this program has a great impact on my life. This program has helped me with my reading, math, science, and homework. My grades have improved. This after-school program changed my whole aspect on my learning. I would not be where I am today without the help of the teachers at the Russell Reading Program." Another student also wrote, "Thank you for helping me to become a better student. My test scores are better, now I get all As." With the funding help from the city of North Miami, we have changed the lives of many kids, and we are able to be the only reading program, not charging the kids, or the students, or families, for this program. We're also reaching out to the mothers through the Dragonfly Dollens, an auxiliary group of the Russell Life, encouraging them to get involved in their children's lives by reading to and with them for at least 15 minutes per day. We realize that when the parents get involved, the kids do much better in school. We know that the city of North Miami takes great pride in being a city that offers such a valuable program to its families, which is a solid investment in the success of our future residents, to not only foster better test scores and academic improvement, but also to nurture a love of reading and a passion for learning that will impact families and last a lifetime. We know that all kids can learn if we give them the tools to succeed. And yes, we have received funding from the city of North Miami before, and also other funding to help with the program.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Not so much a question as an observation, I would like to say. Your application was extremely well-done and professional, and one of the challenges, it makes it very easy to evaluate your organization.
Thank you.
And from what I read, your organization does an outstanding job, but the, the application process itself, I think you make it very easy for us to understand what you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next organization will be the Police Athletic League of North Miami. May that representative of police come forward? The organization has requested an amount of $15,000. Staff is recommending $8,500. Good evening, Sergeant.
Good evening, all. Sergeant Kessler Brooks, North Miami Police Department, over the, over the Community Services Section. And I'll start by giving you a little bit of a background. This program was founded in 1996, and over 10 years, the last 10 years, the police chief has served as an executive director on a board with two dedicated officers, full-time on the organization as directors and assistant directors. PAL of North Miami services over 350 youths through sports, academics, and leadership-focused programs annually. A little bit about our success, from 1996 to date, the PAL of North Miami has successfully provided services to over 7,000 middle and high school youth participants. From 2014 to 2015, 100% of the participants were diverted from being arrested. Since 1996, North Miami PAL program participants have performed Since nineteen ninety-six, North Miami PAL program participants have performed over two hundred and twenty-five thousand service hours with various community events. During the two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen fiscal year, I think we should note also that ninety percent of our youth participants maintained a satisfactory GPA level of at least two-point-oh, with thirty percent of them having above three-point-oh GPA. Our programs all consist of, a program for the young ladies is called Brains in Beauty. It's a bi-weekly program where they go in and they learn various skills. These skills are to help them better their learning exercises now in school, better themselves now, and for when they become adults. Other programs are the sports-based programs. There are boys' and girls' boxing, basketball, track and field, and this is open to children of all ages. This is done in partnerships with the North Miami Parks and Recreation Department. Another one of our programs and our successful program, and you can see that this community reaps a reward of it just within this room, other people who've gone through it is our junior police cadet. We have several officers and several people within this room who have gone through and became success in various careers within this community and others. They also meet bi-weekly and we help them with everything from focusing in school, from how to speak, preparing resumes, and just everything, every challenge and encounter in life in the adult world. These kids participate, the skills that they learn here that I've just mentioned, they exercise often and they put it to work. We have what we call the FACT Festival. The FACT Festival is a yearly festival, which is Families Against Crimes Together. Now, these skills, okay, it's time, all right?
Go ahead and just wrap up real quick.
Our request is fifteen thousand dollars, as you mentioned, the goal is to have another two hundred and fifty kids for this year. Increase the youth with satisfactory grade point average to increase that. Decrease the number of youths with chronic absenteeism in all our schools and decrease the number of youths arrested. We think that if they're part of something, they're not out there doing other. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much.
It's a point of order, I'm not sure Sergeant, whether or not you answered the questions.
Last year.
Last year.
Last year, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any questions Sergeant, one second, we may have some questions from the panel.
I apologize.
Right here, sir.
Sarge, what year was that started?
Ninety-six.
I wonder who the wise chief was.
Someone very wise, yeah.
And I believe we have a gentleman on the panel that was a member of...
I believe so.
The organization?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
As a participant, known as a participant.
Yes, and successfully navigated to become a police officer. One of our current instructors for the program right now was one of our scholarship winners, is an officer with North Miami, and now is giving back to these young kids by being an instructor and facilitating the courses.
I can honestly say the program works.
Well, I want to commend Emmanuel Adente, member of our planning commission, and I think we owe you a lot for the efforts that PAL has done.
Yes.
And also recognize Emmanuel, very good job. Thank you very much, Sergeant. Our next organization will be Ladies of Valor Empowerment. This organization has requested twenty-one thousand dollars. Staff has recommended eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Good evening, may I have your name and address, please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Aloud Pierre. I'm the founder and president of the Ladies of Valor Empowerment. And the Youth of Valor Empowerment is an expansion of love. We've been in existence for the past ten years, as a matter of fact, on June twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, we'll be celebrating our ten-year anniversary, working with women and now we're working with the youth. The Youth of Valor Empowerment is a mentorship intervention program. Why did we bring YOV? We've been working with the mothers, and as we've been working with the mothers, the mothers started to bring their daughters, started to tell us stories about the daughters, and we realized we can really do something to increase high school graduation, help the girls to understand what you call human trafficking, by working with other community leaders, by working with other organizations. I'm standing here proudly to say tomorrow, eleven of the YOVs will be graduating from high school. I've seen the increase in their grades, I've heard the stories. One of the YOVs said, "Thank you, Lady Aloud, for what you've done, God will pay you." When I came to YOV, my grade was one-point-five, I used to skip school, I used to fight. I've been teaching the YOVs to lean on each other, to make friends. And she said to me, "I met another YOV, because of her, my grade has increased." Because whenever I speak with her, she talk about school, she talk about grades, she talk about homework. So with that, now my grade point average is two-point-five. And she was promoted to one of the leaders in training. The YOVs that have been progressing very well, after the first session, I moved them up to leaders in training. And we've done a lot, not only we meet every week, we participate at educational community event. We work with the schools, we work with Dr. Mendigo on domestic violence issues, we work with the state attorney's office who provide human trafficking for the YOVs. The reason I asked for more money, as a matter of fact, this summer we're getting ready to to test a new session called Learn and Play with STEM, because this is where America's going now. Among the graduates, we have three of them that will major in electronic engineering. And we plan to bring more math to the YOVs, we plan to bring more computers to the YOVs. So this summer, we're gonna test the program, and I know it's gonna be good, and we would like to continue to do it next summer, so that's why we asked for more money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from staff?
The point of order, I'm not sure that, madam, can you please answer the two questions?
I'm so sorry, sir, I'm sorry.
Yes, first question number one would be, is this your first-time requesting?
No, sir, I'm sorry, this is my second or third time, and we do have other supports, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
If everyone could remember that when they start their presentation, thank you very much. Is there any questions?
I have none.
All right, very good. We'll go ahead and move on to organization number four. That is the North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizen Services, Inc. They are requesting thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Staff has recommended eight thousand dollars. Good evening, please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Kleinberg, and I'm the Executive Director of the North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizen Services. We're at six-twenty Northeast, one hundred and twenty-seventh Street in North Miami. The North Miami Foundation has been in business about forty-two years in North Miami. Since nineteen seventy-four, we've been providing older adults in the community with services such as transportation to grocery stores, social work support, home-delivered meals, homemaker, and volunteer services to help individuals remain independent in their homes for as long as possible. According to a report released by the National Foundation to End Senior Hunger, about one in every seven Floridians aged sixteen older, or about six hundred and fifteen thousand people in Florida, based on two thousand thirteen statistics, face the threat of hunger. Our agency provides home-delivered meals to those who are most at risk due to physical frailty and limited resources. With this grant, we propose to provide two meals a day, both breakfast and lunch, to meet at least two-thirds of the required daily nutrition, seven days a week, to some of the most vulnerable clients that we serve. And so I don't miss the points that you've asked us to touch on. We have previously received CDBG funding, and, excuse me, we have revenue from other sources. We thank staff for the recommendation. It's gonna be a little bit tighter than the funding from last year, so, you know, it's our hope to continue service as much as possible to the ones that are already being served. I'll take any questions in chat?
We have any questions from the commission? Just a reach?
Just a comment, that's a great organization, it's been around a long time. In fact, I was a young guy, nineteen seventy-four, now I'm a senior citizen.
Thank you.
Debbie, if I could ask, what is your delivery status? I know you had, is it private vehicles, by volunteers, or how do you get your...
The meals are, every few years, we go out for bid to caterers within Miami-Dade County. Greater Miami Caterers prepares and delivers the meal.
Oh, very good.
Based upon our social work assessments and determination of need.
Thank you very much.
Question, what's the ethnic composition served by your organization?
The specific breakdown might be a little difficult to give you, but we have a broad-based constituency that includes Haitian-Americans, African-Americans, Hispanic-Americans in the community, as well as Anglo. And our average age tends to run about eighty years of age, although we have, we always have, in one or two-hundred-year-olds. One or two one-hundred-year-olds. Our food is that good.
Thank you very much, thank you Debbie. Our next organization is the Youth Education Through Sports, Inc. Representatives here, come on forward, come forward and state your name and address. The amount you requested is ten thousand dollars. Staff is recommending eight thousand. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, excuse me for my voice. My name is Mario Apollon, I'm the Executive Director of Youth Education Through Sports. I wish I had some success stories, but the reality around Kiwanis Park is very challenging. For the past four years, Youth Education Through Sports have been operating at Clyde Center in the middle of Kiwanis Park. Our mission is to engage and empower youth and family through a journey of sports. But for the past four years, even though sports is a major component of our program, that's why we call the program Youth Education Through Sports. But we realize that our kids are failing in the area. I don't know if it's lack of resources, but according to available information, we found out that our kids are at a too great behind level. The graduation rate in the area is forty-five percent, compared to Miami-Dade County, it's seventy-five percent. So this is why that we've been very focusing on academic achievement, because what we do throughout the year, it's a year-round after-school program and summer enrichment program. For the past six months, we've been making a lot of efforts to improve our quality of services. We partnered with Miami-Dade College, they're gonna provide mathematics and science during our summer camp. We were able to secure a grant with Children Trust to build our capacity. And we just applied for a grant with Miami Foundation Challenge Space. We are one of the finalists. What they're gonna do, they're gonna give the park a facelift, they're gonna provide fitness equipment at the park, some pavilion to create sheds, and picnic tables. We did incorporate a pathway for people to exercise as well, because what we realized that focusing on just the kids by itself, we have to engage the whole family. We've been meeting with the community for the past six months, with the help of Children Trust Community Engagement Team, it's been very successful. We just connected with a program called Education Effect with Dr. Hell and to provide relief and also to connect us with the resources how to provide quality services, especially in academic. So with the help of, with the funding of the grant, with the CDBG grant, we will be able to provide even better quality services.
And again, this is your first time...
No, this is our second time, last year we didn't apply because of unfortunate circumstances, we missed the deadline, but that's our second time.
You have other funding sources other than what you're asking for?
For the past year or this year?
Yes, this year or...
We did secure one from Children Trust, but we're working on other funding opportunities.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Stay right there, is there any questions from staff?
You were saying that you haven't had much success, so I'm still, I'm still, I guess, a little bit confused or in the gray area as to why.
Well, the thing is, we had very high expectation. And I believe that if we're working with kids, we want them to improve them. And we feel like this is something that all kids in our program should be excel. And right now, it's not the case, but this is why I said that they are failing. But in the area overall, the statistics are there. We met with the principal at Benjamin Franklin, he said the same thing, he confirmed it, because we've been meeting on a regular basis, we really wanna tackle this problem, this is why that I am fully aware of the crisis.
So you originally, because when I read the name of your organization, Through Sports, it seems like originally you were trying to approach it through sports, but some reality hit that that may not be the best way to tackle the real-life issues that you're seeing or your team is seeing.
Well, definitely, as a matter of fact, if you look at our history, we've been in existence for more than fifteen years. We had a soccer school, but we had to make, it become a second priority for us, because our goal was to make sure that the kids be able to go to college with soccer scholarship. But without a good education, they won't be able to go anywhere. So we strictly focus, we strongly focus right now on improving their grades to make sure that they have a overall opportunity.
Let me ask you, how many students did you have this year?
Twenty.
Thirty. And what did you take with regards to those thirty kids? If you, because what I'm reading from what you're saying and also Mr. James...
Well, we have a good person...
None of them, did their grades improve or...
We have a few that improved, but we have a couple like, I will say ten percent, that their grades are still not satisfactory. And this is why that I'm not here to impress you guys, I'm here to, I mean, to provide services. I mean, if something that is not working, so we have to make effort to make sure that it's working.
What are some of the ideas that you have that you wanna...
Well, we realize also that we have a lot of tutors, but all tutors are not well-equipped. This is why we connect with higher education like FIU, we partner with FIU, and they have a program called Education Effect, they're gonna be working with us because my job is to make sure that we turn them around. And if they are failing, that would be a very difficult step to accomplish.
When did you institute that program at FIU?
Like, it's been two months. But we partnered with Children Trust for the past six months. They are connecting us with a lot of great organization.
Are you providing enough time? I'm not quite clear as to, do they come to your center?
Well, we do provide a lot of time, as a matter of fact, we open our doors at three, and then sometime at seven o'clock, we haven't finished yet. And I think that, you know, it's the fact that the kids are home, they're not getting the additional support. And some parents are not educated enough to provide, to follow the curriculum and provide the help. So most of the time, if the kids are not understanding something in the classroom, they heavily rely on us, so we have to provide the extra time and to make sure that, but we hopefully... so we have to provide the extra time and to make sure that, but we, hopefully with the support that we're getting, and then we will be, we will be able to turn the situation around.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I appreciate your honesty, because I think a lot of times, people like to fluff things and just to make their application look good, because they're, you know, scared to lose some funding. So that's why I appreciate your honesty, and that's why I asked more questions. And I hope that you and your organization are able to help some of the kids, you know, improve in the way that you expect them to.
I truly appreciate it, thank you so much, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And, you know, and I would encourage you to look at other sources other than FIU for perhaps Berry University for tutors. I know that they may have some social programs, and a lot of those students may be available. And also St. Thomas might be able to assist you, so I would encourage you to look at some of the other institutions.
Thank you so much.
All right?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you. All right, the next program we're going to hear from is the Experts Resource and Community Center, Inc. The organization has requested ten thousand dollars, staff is recommending eight thousand dollars. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Danny Felton, six hundred Northwest one eighty-third Street. Basically, I'd like to talk to you about the Experts Resource Community Center. We were founded in two thousand and four, we are a HUD-approved, a local branch, affiliated NID Housing Counseling Agency, which is a national HUD-approved organization. We provide homebuyer education, foreclosure prevention, down payment assistance, and financial literacy for adult and youth. Over the past ten to twelve years, we've assisted consistently over twelve hundred individuals to support, sustain, and create homeownership. We've made a diligent effort to work here in the city of North Miami to assist those residents. Just as of today, I checked the, the MLSTing systems, and I realized that there were over a thousand foreclosures here in the city of North Miami, which is things that we focus on trying to address by bringing in different industry partners to leverage and provide foreclosure assistance, to provide down payment assistance, as well as to provide homebuyer education.
Very good, and again, this is your first time before?
We have received funding in the past, and we do receive funding from other sources.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. Any questions from our panel? The one thousand foreclosures caught my ear, were they first-time buyers?
I hadn't, I didn't go that, yeah, those were just lispenesses that were filed as of today.
I didn't think it was that high. What, what would be the first step normally that your organization would do? Or how would somebody be able to ask for assistance through your organization?
What we've done in the past, which has been very successful, is we've hosted events which we would actually partner with the local financial institutions and bring them out to the city. We've hosted several events here at the Gwen Mongola Center this, recently, as well as we do events at the Joe Celestine Center, where we would have bank point of contacts to come out and underwriters, and we'll partner with the local state representatives or political individuals that can draw the people and get the message out. And what we would do is, we would assist those individuals in completing the documentation, because many times, that's the issue, they don't respond, or they're unable to really, you know, they get frustrated in the process. So we're the advocate to help them to complete those documents.
Very good. Now, do you reach out to the banks themselves, or do the banks try to reach out to you?
Yeah, we have a direct contact, we're part of the National Foreclosure Mitigation Counseling Fund, which we work directly with the banks. And when we do those events, the banks, when we give them the address of the location that we're going to do the event, they send out direct mail to all of the lispenesses in the area to encourage participation from the residents.
Very good, any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next organization is the Florida Immigration, I'm sorry, Florida Immigrant Coalition, that are known as FLIC. They are requesting twenty thousand dollars, staff has recommended eight thousand. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, my name is Ivan Para, twenty-eight zero-zero Biscayne Boulevard. We have received funds from you before, for several years, not the first time that we are receiving funds. We are working together for several years now, we are proud of that, we are happy serving the community of North Miami. We are helping immigrants to become U.S. citizens, we are holding citizenship clinics in the city. We are doing this because there are a lot of people that for lack of information, or lack of money, or fear, they are not applying for citizenship. So with this service, we are serving a lot of people, and we have a goal for this ground, two hundred people, to serve two hundred people. During this year, we have served almost one hundred fifty. We are receiving other funding for the city, for other programs for the city, Miami-Dade County, and also for the state, so we are serving other part of the state. We are very proud to serve low-income families, around seventy percent of the people apply for fee waiver. So they qualify basically for the, to don't pay six hundred eighty dollars, the fee that the USCIS is charging for the, to become a U.S. citizen. So in the, during the legal clinics, we provide legal assistance, education about the process, legal service, and also follow-up. When we can't complete any application at the clinic here in the city of North Miami at the community centers, we follow up with them in our office, Gloria Immigrant Coalition.
Very good, and you have another staff with her, if she wishes to say anything? Okay, very good, I saw you sitting there. Any questions, gentlemen?
The number of your clientele, approximately, how many people have you helped?
For the city of North Miami, during the year into clinics, citizenship clinics, we have served one hundred forty-eight.
Hundred forty-eight?
One hundred forty-eight.
Thank you.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Next organization is the San, you'll have to forgive my pronunciation, San La Haitian Neighborhood Center, Inc. They're requesting ten thousand dollars, staff is recommending six thousand five hundred dollars. Good evening, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Shirley Planson, one fifty-six forty Northeast Eighth Avenue. San La Youth Enrichment Program is an innovative program based on primarily the full-service school model. If there's anything that I want you guys to think about why this is a necessity, it's forty kids in fourteen months. And those are numbers that should resonate with all of us, and what does forty and fourteen mean? We've lost forty youth in fourteen months. If we were to take that between January and the beginning of May, we would have lost one youth every other week. So youth enrichment programs are extremely important. Our program, one of the main things that we've come to understand is that we've gotta keep them alive enough to walk through the doors of the programs. Everybody wants to, you know, we support the education, we support the academics, but we also understand that part of the reason why we're losing our youth on the streets is because when they come, they're not entertained enough. We're not keeping them engaged, because they feel like they're still in school. So a lot of what we do is very much hands-on, not so much bookwork, but teaching them through hands-on approaches and taking them places. Our services are proposed to serve thirty North Miami residents between the ages of twelve and eighteen through academic enrichment, hands-on, service learning activities, educational explorations. Our educational explorations range from jail tours, parks, cleanups, Everglades, science museums, things that will bring the textbook to reality for them. And then, of course, cultural enrichment. Because we serve almost ninety-eight percent of Haitian kids, a lot of the reality is, besides May eighteenth and Griot and Bunun, they don't know anything about where they come from and the richness of their culture. So a lot of what we want to do is to provide the service to them in a way that will cap, capture them and keep them. Just like Ladies of Valor, we are proud to say, I just came from a graduation of one of our kids, we're prepping to attend graduation for about another eight of our kids, and when you have one student that's shot eighteen times and lives, and he tells you, had it not been for this program, I don't know where I would have been, I think we're doing something right. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate the recommendation.
And this is your first time?
No, this is not our first time, we have received CDBG funding before, and we are also receiving funding from the Children's Trust for this particular program.
Very good, Children's Trust. Any questions, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next organization is the Irving Thomas Elite Basketball Academy. Irving Thomas Elite Basketball Clinic, Academy, sorry. They are requesting a ten thousand, I'm sorry, thirty thousand dollars, staff is recommending six thousand five hundred dollars.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Natasha Thomas, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Irving Thomas Elite Basketball Academy, fifty-six forty-five Court Ridge Drive, Coral Springs, Florida. The mission of our organization is, our organization was established, sorry, our organization was established in two thousand and ten, and the mission is to help kids understand the realities of sports and to give them more information needed to transition through, transition into academic and athletic scholarships. We have a six-core component program that we implement during our, during our camp sessions. And the first one being the teaching the fundamentals of basketball, of course, health and fitness, and sports nutrition, the college prep component, and the professional development skills and information on careers in sports. We are proud to say that over the past five years, we have enrolled over sixteen hundred and fifty children in our program, and six hundred of those children have been from the city of North Miami. We've partnered with organizations that are in, that are in North Miami, and that has been with the local churches on a Sneakers for Haiti project, where we delivered fifteen hundred pairs of sneakers, fifty basketballs to Port-au-Prince, Haiti, from the earthquake. We've donated over four hundred t-shirts, three hundred backpacks, jerseys, and a hundred t-shirts to the Park and Recreation, I mean, Parks and Recreation Department through the PALS, through the PALS Summer Jam program. Also, we've donated through the National Retired Players Association, we've donated over fifty-five hundred dollars to the two PALS of North Miami. And most importantly, we have collaborated and built great relationships with the North Miami, North Miami Parks and Recreation, the North Miami Police Department, and the Police Athletic League. As we move forward, we are looking forward to being a part of the community of North Miami and helping the children be champions in school and in the community. We have received funding from the CDBG grant, and we also have received private funding from private foundations.
Thank you very much. Questions, gentlemen?
You said you had six hundred North Miami students?
I'm sorry?
Six hundred North Miami?
Yes, six hundred, yes.
And you're in Coral Springs?
Well, my address, my address is in Coral Springs. When I moved to Coral Springs twenty years ago, I had not implemented this program. So I grew up here, but I'm now returning to serve the children in Miami Gardens in North Miami.
Thank you.
So the, I'm sorry, the, how did you, I'm looking at the goals that you set where you not only are involved with the basketball skills and training, how are you evenly distributing, and how do you determine what, you know, how your programs are dealt with? You have health and fitness and sports nutrition, you give a wide variety of different programs in your listing. Explain how one ties in with the other, with, with one particular student, or do you break them up?
Well, what we're looking to do, because the program in North Miami has only been one week, we're looking to extend the program year-round, which we've already started that process. We've had a basketball clinic where we have served the two hundred and fifty children at Arch Creek Elementary and North Miami Middle School. And the component, we, we get the kid, we get the kids through the sport of basketball, but we know that there is, there are other components that the kids need to be successful. So during our, during our clinics and during our, during our basketball program, we do have speakers and specialists come in, and they give them the information on college prep, sports nutrition. So they are broken up throughout the, throughout the day and during, during our clinics.
Do you have tutors, for instance, with your reading initiative, reading assessment and tutoring?
Yes, we do, we have partnered with the Literacy Through Sports Foundation, and they do give the assessments, and once the, once the children are assessed, then they recommend tutoring.
And the personal, social, and financial responsibility?
That's given through our speakers.
Okay.
Yes.
So is it done on an individual basis, or like you said?
Through a group, through a group, we have, we have kids that are ages eight through eighteen, and they're broken up, you know, with, the younger kids are broken up and, the younger kids are broken up and from like ages eight through ten, and then from thirteen to fifteen, like the middle schoolers, they're broken up in a group, and then the high school kids are, are broken up as well into individual groups.
Where does all this activity take place?
This, we have a camp that actually starts on Monday, and it's at the Joe Celestine Center in North Miami.
Where was the campus at?
I'm sorry?
The campus, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
The camp starts on Monday from June thirteenth through the seventeenth.
Yeah, but I mean, where was it located at?
At the Joe Celestine Center in North Miami, yes.
Excuse me, my hearing is?
No, it's okay.
Suncasteria.
I'm always a little nervous.
Students on the east side can get there, I suspect, or?
Yes, we haven't had a problem. This year, we're, we have reached out to the North Miami Senior High School will be attending, Alonzo Tracy Morning Senior High will be attending, North Miami Beach Senior High. And we have a local AAU teams along with kids that are younger. So currently, we have eighty-five kids that will be attending this, this summer camp.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Okay, the next, next organization is the Prosperity Social and Community Development Group. They have requested an amount of ten thousand dollars, and staff has recommended a five thousand.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nadajeville Saint, and we're located at eleven seventy-five Northeast one twenty-fifth Street. Prosperity has been existing since August two thousand and eleven. I am the Executive Director of Prosperity. Prosperity was birthed out of the need of assistance when a lot of our parents and the residents of the North Miami community needed assistance of social workers going out to schools to stand in the gap as leaders for them because of the fact that they were unable to speak English, write, and communicate for their children. So with the help of Lucia from the library, we birthed out an adult literacy program for the families at the residents in North Miami. And within that, we have grown to have about a hundred and twenty residents in the city of North Miami receiving basic English skills, writing, reading to their children. And with that program, has built a lot of empowering the families to read to their children. And with that program, has built a lot of empowering the families to read to their children, assist them with homework, attend parent-teacher conference, and also assisting them with becoming very self-independent. And then one great thing that we have done, within the last two years that we've received funding from the city of North Miami, we had about six residents from the age of fifty-four and up that received their GD. And keep in mind, most of these residents are immigrants, have never been to school, never read, write in their life. And at this time, they have able to accomplish this at this age. So that's a great accomplishment for me, and I know for sure for them. But I don't want to keep the whole time, so I did come with one of our participants from the adult literacy program, and her name is Ms. Kathleen Jean Simon, and she will share her experience with you guys.